Better get that on. Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mary Beth.
Nelson. Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Bulk.
Here.
Orison.
Item three is the consent agenda. Item A is a motion to approve city council minutes of November 7, 2022. Item B, licenses, approved five-day Class C liquor license for Top of Iowa Lucky Wife LLC for bridal and party showcase at the Clay County Events Center, and renewal of Class E liquor license for C's Spencer Liquor Store, all subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. C is a motion to approve Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program Contract for 2023 East Side Separation Project. D is a resolution approving the annual city street financial report fiscal year 2022. E is a resolution approving tax increment financing indebtedness certification to the county auditor, and annual appropriation of certain rebate payments. F is a resolution acknowledging receipt of calendar year 2023 budget for Spencer Municipal Utilities. And G is a motion to approve purchase of Gasboy Software for Public Works Department for $3,000 with an annual service agreement of $849 and monthly storage of $99. And before I ask for a motion to approve, I would like Mark White, Public Works Director, to come to the mic and just talk to us a little bit. I know you had a memorandum in the council packet on the software for the Public Works Department, but I think it would be interesting for the public to hear what this is all about.
Certainly. Folks may not be aware that the central garage houses the fuel tanks and all of the divisions get their fuel from the central garage, along with the Spencer Hospital and the Spencer School System as well for the buses. So at the end of the month, we'll run a report and bill out appropriately to where they go, and that's where we use the software and the process is where it comes into play, is the billing and the reports. So the system is on the third Gasboy system that we've started with. It started in 1980. It was some little plastic cards you would use that we would make in-house. And then it switched to a key type, and now it's a FOB. And the divisions all pay a certain amount to go into a fund to support the fuel system, including the school and the hospital it was. It worked really well initially, and it was done on a percentage. But then, as the fuel prices rose, the percentage was disproportionate. It was too much, basically, so it was redesigned. When there's a calculation where everybody chips into this ongoing fund. So anyway, you're able to walk into the central garage, get your fuel. Unfortunately, in the world of technology, the software has no longer supported. The system is about 10 years old, and we all know how that goes as the world changes. So the new system won't go through and be housed on our server. It'll be a cloud-based, so there's a course of software upgrade, as always. And then the $849, that service agreement is basically tech support on the system. And then the cloud storage to store all the records is $99 a month. As most technology things in this world, it works really well, but there's no free lunch.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, there are no public hearings or old business on tonight's agenda, so we'll move to item six under new business. Item A is a resolution to establish policies regarding the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, a procurement policy of goods and services, a code of conduct, the prohibition of the use of excessive force, and affirmative fair housing policy, and an equal opportunity during the execution of federally assisted projects for the 2023 East Side Separation Project. And this may sound somewhat confusing, and it is. So I've asked Darren Baumgartner to, from Northwest Iowa Planning and Development, who helped us with this CBDG grant, to come to the meeting tonight, and he's going to offer a little explanation on this.
Well, the city was awarded $600,000 in CBG funds. That's Community Development Block Grant Funds. The obligation or responsibility, once you enter into a contract for these funds with Iowa Economic Development Authority, is that all the federal and state regulations that go with that, that the city advisor adheres to those. So there's six policies. The resolution would pass those six policies. And I don't know if anybody's got any questions on any particular one. There's, you know, I'm not an expert in each one of them, but there's a history behind each one of those and why they're in there, so.
Don, have you had a chance to look at any of those policies and get legal opinion on any of those?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've seen them in connection with this project and with earlier projects. And as Darren has alluded to, if you take the federal funding, you accept the policies. And I would say, I didn't, I don't find anything terribly onerous about any of the policies, particularly in regard to this project, which doesn't involve displacing any persons.
Right. Yeah, I was just surprised that we've applied for these and why this just came up on this, on the CBG grants before and been awarded, right?
Correct. I mean, so if you go all the way back for the stormwater separation project, go back a number of years where it started off at the river, phases all the way up to the fairgrounds on Fourth Avenue. I think there's like three CBGs, I think, or maybe four that funded that. I'm trying to recall. There would have been some variation of each one of these policies that the city would have approved in conjunction with each respective grant that they would have received. So this is just another in the line, so to speak, different area, but same source of funding.
Well, thanks for the update on it. I just saw it, it kind of drew my attention to a couple of things there, and I was like, I don't ever recall seeing those in our packets before on those times.
And some of them are, I wouldn't say they're common sense, but excessive force, you know, and the nonviolent civil rights, something like, you know. So police aren't going to use excessive force. I don't think there's any history of that here. You know, the affirmative fair housing, you got to remember that the money's coming through HUD, Housing and Urban Development. It's not a housing project, but that's where the money's coming from. So they're going to attach that, you know, to that equal opportunity. The city's already doing that, you know. The code of conduct basically means me or anybody from the city are going to receive money under the table, so to speak, in conjunction with this project. So these are all, I don't know if you might say common sense, but yeah, things that the city's really probably already doing in some aspect. But it's just federal-wise, they're saying, hey, you know, we don't know who you are out there as a community, but you're going to get this money, you're going to follow these policies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Darren. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Brian.
I'll second it.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Item B is a resolution to approve a new fee schedule for the Park Department and Police Animal Impound and to talk with us a little bit about the new fee schedule for the Park Department. Bob Fullheart, Park and Rec Director, is going to talk about that.
Okay, really, the focus on this is just to kind of simplify things at the Aquatic Center. Some of the numbers are just in odd points over the years. So we're just going to take things down, simplify it down. Family Pass will drop down to five people versus six. That'll be $140. Where for the add the member would be our biggest increase. So with that five person on the family pass, if you want to add another member for it, it'd be $20 to add that other member. Otherwise, we're going to take the adult and youth year-long pass, just make that into one individual. Doesn't matter if it's adult or youth, and take that to 65. Daily Pass will go straight across the board at $5. Eliminate a five-day pass, and then the 10-day pass would stay at $40. So just trying to streamline it, make it simpler, easier for everybody. All those will include tax, so when we're selling them at the Aquatic Center throughout the summer, it keeps it simpler for cash handling for everybody, too. We have a few minor increases we want to do on the East Leach Park shelters. Each room would just go up by $10. You can do the combination of the center and west room, so that would go up by $20 for $10 for each room. And that's just to help defer some of the costs that you get from the increased costs that we have now for heating and all of our supplies anymore.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Bob. So I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
The police animal is, I think it's like 40 bucks. Was it going up to, you know?
Yeah, it's going up to whatever it's, whatever animal medical charges us. So it's, I think it was two bucks is what they had told us, and they changed it back. So it's, and the way we worded it going forward is that they up it, then it's just a pass-through fee, and we're not absorbing any increases or, you know. So it's, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, item C is a motion to approve vans recycling contract for five years at $25 per ton and a fuel surcharge of $20 per load if the local diesel fuel price exceeds $5.75 per gallon. And Mark White, again, is going to talk about that. I know you've been in conversations with vans, and I know there's, there was a good memo in our packet, but I think that the public needs to understand how important the recycling operation is to the community and what this is all about.
Certainly. This is the third agreement that we, if approved tonight, that will enter with van sanitation out of Lamar's. They currently process all of our co-mingled recycling. So everything that you throw in the truck or in the bins at Walmart or Hy-Vee is then transported to the transfer station. We loaded into vans trailers that they own, and then they pick the trailers up, haul them to Lamar's, and that is where the material's processed and sorted out. So currently, the existing contract was for $12, which was originally negotiated five years ago. Of course, with all the increase and cost increase, it's came back at 25. And the recycling world is certainly not immune to challenges right now. There's some really soft commodity prices, so we can, we can understand that. And vans is a very important component to our operation. So the nice part about the recycling is, you know, the material is being kept out of the landfill at a significant less rate than what the landfill tipping fee is. Also, it's part of our DNR regulations to provide recycling for our community. So the project was presented to the finance committee, slight little tweak on it. I think they weren't aware of the fuel surcharge until we got that worked out. We did make contact with them to see if they would entertain maybe a tiered system through some negotiations, and he was pretty firm, saying, I kind of need it to be bumped up to be viable right now. So it's been a good working relationship. It just, it's one of those, it's one of those agreements that just quietly works along without any issue. Public Works recommends approval.
Mark, how often do they come up and?
At least once a week, yeah. For the most part, it's once a week, yeah.
Where's that loaded out at?
Well, the co-mingle goes into the corner of the tipping floor. If you've been in the transfer station on those days, that corner's cleaned out, and we just switch trailers and just load it into the top with the loader like we load normal solid waste.
So if we ever had a discussion about, and I'm not trying to make a bunch of waves here, so don't get too riled up, anybody.
No, no more than normal.
Yeah, well, thanks. I do what I can. If we were ever to have some discussion about a once-a-week recycling route, would that change what the agreement would be with them?
No.
Okay.
That would not.
Is that anything realistic? I hear a lot of people ask about it, and, you know, some people don't have room for two cans. I know this is getting into a little bit different area. Maybe we can talk about it another time, but.
Sure, I would welcome it in a committee discussion to bring some more information ahead. Of course, you would need more trucks and et cetera, because right now, the way it's laid out, the refuse trucks are used for the recycling. And if you added another day pickup, of course, you may be able to on Friday. I'd have to think about it. You're just catching me a little off-guard without a lot of thought right at the moment, so.
Good questions, though.
Yeah, 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 you could, we can have the conversation. We always welcome that.
Mark, 100% plus increase sounds like a lot, but if we could kind of just do some numbers like we did in finance real quick. So talking about $13 more a ton, how many tons on average a month do we transport out to vans?
Brian, thank you. I had it written down and overlooked it, so appreciate it. Yep. So we do 59.8 tons average per month. I figured it at 60, so 60 tons times 12 months is 720 tons a year. So at the current rate, it'd be $8,640, and at the new rate, it'll be $18,000. It'd be about a $10,000 increase.
One of, one of the other things, too, I think, is that that is 720 tons that's not going into the landfill.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we have to take that into consideration.
The community does a good job recycling. We appreciate it.
And Brian, maybe, thanks, Mark. That was, I appreciate those numbers.
No, I needed a reminder. Yeah, I overlooked it.
And then to those numbers, Brian, can you touch on our solid waste rates and how we only did that for one year and this kind of maybe being one of those reasons? So how will we be looking at this increase as we move forward?
Yeah, as we enter into budget, as you remember, as we reset the whole process for setting solid waste rates last year, we only set them as a one because we were making some significant changes to the whole rate structure, and so we wanted just to set those in for one year to see how we did at restructuring that whole rates. So when we get through the first six months here, at the end of December, January time period, we'll start looking at those again with PFM, see how the first six months are working. And then as we start crafting the budget for fiscal year '24 here in the next month and two months, those will be taken into account to see if any adjustments in that rate structure need to occur. But that was part of it, not necessarily because of this agreement, but just with the whole change in rate structure and that. We wanted to make sure we weren't locked in and that we're still being able to, you know. The reason we did that rate structure and rate cost was to distribute those costs evenly and then to make sure we're covering the capital needs of the division and stuff, so.
Okay, at this time, I'd enter a request for a motion.
I'd make the motion that we approve the contract with Vans Recycling.
Motion made by Brian.
I'll second it.
Second by Donovan, and even, we've kind of done an end round around Robert's rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posnay, motion carries. D is a motion to approve final order to 2022 wastewater treatment plant driveway replacement project to reflect as-built project quantities for a decrease of $24,395.50. Tom?
I'll second.
And second by Tracy. Any discussion?
It would prove a decrease.
It was a decrease, yeah.
I like it. We've got to do those later.
Yeah, it's all good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posnay, motion carries. Item E is a resolution accepting work on the 2022 wastewater treatment plant driveway replacement project.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ron. Did somebody have a second? Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Item seven, engineers' report. Jim?
Evening. Update on a few ongoing projects. The North Water Quality Project that's in the parking lot of the Iowa Lakes Parking Lot up there in the north mall, and that, that work is finishing up. They're placing the mulch and the riprap in the base, and we'll wait till spring to put the plants in. But so that project is wrapping up. We did have somebody drive into it, which is kind of one of the concerns we had about putting a hole in the middle of a parking lot. But we're talking about maybe getting the curbs painted and try to increase the visibility, but that's kind of how it works. The other project, 25th Street and 11th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project down south. Valley had pulled off to do some work at the hospital, and now they're back out there at that project, so they'll continue to dig as long as they can until they get a hard freeze up. And then, speaking of the hospital, you may notice on Third Avenue, east of the hospital, there's a street patch there. They had to do some water main work in connection with that hospital expansion, and that should get patched this week, and then we'll open that up next week after we get a little cure time. So those are basically the projects we have out for construction. In the office, we are working on the North Y project right now, kind of analyzing drainage. You know, we knew going in that drainage was kind of an issue, and it's maybe a little more of an issue than we'd like it to be. But we're sorting through that, and then it should fall together pretty short order. We're working with some of the developers on site access and some of those things, too. And then finally, we're, we did, I did something this week that I haven't done since 2006, and that's hire another engineer. So we hired an Iowa State grad, start in the spring, and so we're looking forward to that. And we'll bring him down here and introduce him to you when we're ready, so. That's all I have, and if there's questions.
Any questions?
Jim, I know it's early in the process, but are we marching towards a bid? What is the goal on the bid letting for the north project?
Yeah, we're looking probably at February letting. Probably that, you know, we're kind of shooting for the first Monday in February, which means, you know, to set letting dates, we've got to have it done a month ahead of time. So try to get everything buttoned up in January. Some of the stuff takes DNR approval, so you got to kind of allow for that. You know, as soon as you get the, as much information as they need to review, we get it down to the DNR. The lift station and the sizing of that is something they took a pretty hard look at. Otherwise, everything else is pretty straightforward. DOT will have some input on the intersections and the connections, so we got to give them a little time, too. So that's the goal.
Jim, going back to the 25th Street project, how is the digging and stuff going out there? And how far have you advanced on that? I know we, it started out, you got a couple hundred feet before they moved away, and then right down.
Yeah, and Ron, I haven't been out there lately, so I don't know where they stopped the last time. But in talking with Ross, it's going well. It's going well, you know. Being dry helps.
Yeah. Could you send us an update, just kind of, or maybe have Ross give a call? Maybe I can stop out there, too, and talk to Ross, see how it.
Well, yeah, your best bet's to come on out and take a look.
Right, yeah.
You know, we'll give it to you by stationing, and that won't mean much to you.
Right, exactly. So, all right. I appreciate that.
Yep, you bet. Yeah, don't fall in the hole.
They might push me in.
Jim, this is kind of a follow-up question to Brian's question on the North Y. How about the infrastructure and streets on that five-acre patch in North Side of Shawanah? Any update on that? I know you're working on plans of getting layouts done, but just.
Yeah, we're, I guess, you know, we've got, we've got concept plans done. You know, if you want, we can, we can take that to detailed plans and specs, but if anything changes, you've, you know, you know, we're engineers. We sell engineering. We'll sell you the engineering. But if, but if something changes, that's, you know, before you know you have a project, that, that, you know, some of it we can salvage, but some of it we can't. So I think that's kind of where we're at, is waiting for a project to develop so that we don't get ahead of ourselves with the engineering.
But I.
Yep. Brian?
We're, what is it that you're working on, I guess, because, or Dan? I mean, I recall the conversation that we might have some interest in trying to kind of bidlet both some infrastructure work on that section and the North Y project at the same time. And so if we're not in a position where both could potentially go out for some form of bidletting together, it doesn't seem like that would be a possibility.
We're, we're not working toward that goal. Again, I, I would just caution you to, you know, you're basically doing two speculative projects at the same time without, you know, a developer or someone coming in. The danger in that always is that they'll want something different. I've already had somebody come in and talk to me about moving the street. Well, if we build, if we start building infrastructure, you know, moving, it's out of the question. So I don't, I don't know, you know, it's something we can talk about in committee if you guys want to have a committee meeting and kick it around. I, I don't know that you're going to get a lot of economy of scale in doing both projects at once, if that's the thought.
I've, I've been also talking to a potential developer that I don't want to say too much, but I'll, I will send out an email. I think I've mentioned it before, but that's the same person that wanted to move the street. I think I said we weren't interested in that, and, and they threw out, well, we're talking about something really big here. And I said, well, in that case, I need to know more details, and, and he's writing up a proposal now that I'll share with you when I get it. But, so potentially, we might want to do that if it's a big enough project. I don't know. We'll have to see. He was very nonspecific and. He was very nonspecific, and so I asked for the specifics, and I'm expected to get them at some point. I didn't get a timeline, but he said they were going to put together a proposal and get it to us, so I will share that with the appropriate committee when I get that proposal.
In which location was that, man?
The five acres.
Any other questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight, City Managers Report.
Several things. I, we talked about, talking about the North Y and the Roundabout and that. We're going to get together with a joint meeting with the supervisors at some point. I have a question. Do somebody, a couple of people mentioned meeting jointly with them and the DOT at the same time. I need a little feedback to know whether we should meet with them without the DOT first or meet with them with the DOT, and what do y'all think about which way we should go with that?
I'd personally just like to meet with the supervisors, because if we're throwing out ideas there, you know, and the DOT, we don't have any clear answer, really doesn't make sense for DOT to sit in there and listen to both sides until we kind of can work with the county and decide what we're, what both sides are thinking.
Anyone else have anything for Dan on this?
What do you suggest, Dan?
Well, that's what I was leaning towards, is meeting just with the supervisor, and I'll get that set up in the next couple of weeks. We'll have to arrange it with them, of course, but probably either the week after Thanksgiving or the week after that, I'll try to get something set up with them about that. I mentioned in my update about...
Are we still talking about kicking around other ideas besides a Roundabout? Is that what you're talking about?
Well...
Or trying to come to an agreement?
Come, trying to come to agreement. If you recall, last time...
Right.
The DOT was here, they basically said they were going to force the J-turns on us if there was an accident up there, which is not ideal for our development plans.
Right.
And, and so, we kind of have to, I think they're forcing us into, try to make an agreement with the Roundabout, which that's what we need to discuss with the supervisors. I think a couple of them, once they see the drastic reduction in access we'll get if they do the J-turns, I think they've left us with very little choice on what we should do up there.
Okay.
But we need to talk about it.
All right. Thank you.
I mentioned about, we had the engineering study done for the floodplain issues at the Green Industrial Park. That's not looking good. Actually, when they looked at it, it almost looks worse than it did before, so we're just going to set that on hold for now. They would give us some, like Jim said, they'd be happy to sell us engineering, but I don't think it's going to get us anywhere. And I also mentioned last week that you'll be seeing a proposal to do a housing feasibility study that came out of that meeting we had last week with some of the area nonprofits. But that won't be, that'll probably be next week. I'll get more details out to you for that, for that meeting. Probably be at the next meeting. Another thing that came up with the utilities, specifically the RACs, they're kind of wanting to do, feeling out our desirability if we would like to do a spec building. There isn't currently none in the state of Iowa. I know we've had some not-good results for that, but they're looking at that. There's, we'll be having more details from them, because the financing of that, I didn't quite get, understand that completely, so we'll get them in, and so you guys can ask questions and see if you're, have a desire to do that. And then, on Wednesday, we're going to get the facilities plan, the engineers are going to be here to go over that. I don't know, you all have an invite, but if more than a couple of you want to go, we have to publish it as a meeting, so let us know who's all planning on attending that so we can plan accordingly, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Dan?
If I remember right, Wednesday at ten AM?
Yes.
I can't. Just if we want to talk about it right now, or if you want us to email or whatever.
Yeah, you can email this, but we'll have to do it by tomorrow, so...
Okay. Okay. And where is the facility study, again?
It's here, it's probably, we'll do it here if there's going to be a crowd.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Dan. Under the Mayor's Report, just a couple of things. As Dan alluded to about the housing, Dan and Brian Weave and Brian Balk, myself, Chief Warburton, last week, attended a meeting at the County Administration Building. It was attended by some folks from the county and some social service agencies and so forth. And basically, this was to talk about the issue of homelessness in Clay County, and no action, obviously, was taken at that meeting. There was a proposal made to the county and the city, but nothing that we are going to look at at the present time. I mean, maybe down in the future here. But I think that the biggest takeaway from that meeting, and any of you who were at that meeting can chime in on this as well, but the fact that homelessness is an issue in Clay County, we may not see it, and we don't have the tent cities that you see on the news in some of our major metropolitan areas, but homelessness is an issue here in Clay County and in Spencer, to be sure. So, it's an issue that we are going to have to deal with moving forward in some fashion. We already deal with it. We just don't deal with it in a very regulated type of manner at this point. There's a lot of moving parts to it, so... Any of you who were at that meeting want to say anything about that at this point? Okay. And then, lastly, this Thursday, we celebrate Thanksgiving, and this is a tradition that has been around in the United States for over four hundred years, but it was not until eighteen sixty-three with Abraham Lincoln, when President Lincoln declared Thanksgiving to be a national holiday. So, it's only been a little over, about a hundred and fifty years that we've had it as a national holiday. And so, with that, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving this Thursday. Item ten, Counseling Committee Reports.
We have the regular meeting on the fifth, and that meeting with the supervisors, that I'll be scheduling coming up.
Item eleven, entertain a motion to approve Bills and Claims.
I'd make the motion that we approve the Bills and Claims.
Motion made by Brian.
I'll second it.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item twelve, Other Business Opportunity to Address the Council. We have some students in the audience. Would you like to come up and talk, just say who you are and if you're here for a class? This would be great. I think you'd get extra credit. Oh, come up to the, if you would, come up to the microphone. It's your moment on TV.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Jamilet Gonzalez Reguino. Nice to meet you guys.
And whose class are you here for?
For government class.
Okay. Well, welcome, and I'm sure you'll get some good extra credit.
Thank you.
You would if I were teaching government still. Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion. Oh, we have one, Lenny Scaletta, I think, would like to...
Lenny Scaletta, seven oh nine East Twelfth Street. You're talking about homeless people, and I just want, I've been up here before, I think, when Mayor Robinson was mayor, but he, Victory, homeless veterans, the VA has allocated four hundred million dollars to house homeless veterans. And so, you know, we could, I mean, Victory Apartments done it for twenty years or so, and they could give you their phone number if you want. But anyway, the bottom line is, if we can do that for homeless veterans, we can also do it for homeless people in general, help them get a social security disability, take thirty percent of that for utilities and maintenance and things like that, and then help them get jobs and help them get back into the community. So, I think everybody wins, so that's all I need.
Okay. Thank you, Lenny. Anyone else? Okay. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, motion made by Lauren. Got in too late. Second by Donovan. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Meeting adjourned.